Okay, we'll go ahead and get started and just wanted to make note that Mr. Rogers, Jimmy Rogers, has called in. He's joining us via electronics. And Jim Francis texted me several times to let me know he was at the beach and after the third time I reminded him, at that point in time it was rubbing it in. He wasn't informing me anymore. He was rubbing it in. So anyway, Jim's at the beach and he said he was sorry he wouldn't be here and I don't believe him. Anyway, we'll go ahead and get started. Dr. Nolte?
Yes, Board, just welcome to the work session for July, before the July meeting. It's quite a packed agenda, but we want to take our time and cover everything. I actually called Mr. Francis and say, "I'd like to go ahead and put this and this on there." And he said, "Well, we get paid, so let's put it on there." So we're going to start off, I guess I'm in teacher mode, you review what you're going to do during the class, right? So we're going to start off, that first little section is going to be to provide some additional information around budgeting and operation of the Learning Center. Dr. Putnam has one item up there. He's going to talk about a related item, related to facilities. We have done a lot of work on paying people and I think we'll come back in August and September and just show you everything that you have done with us. And it's good. It's real good. With that said, I think we're about at the end of big comprehensive pay raises. There are a couple of little things that we'd like to tweak that would be within the current budget in terms of adding new budget numbers for salary increases. That's not part of our plan. I'm not saying you all would not do that as a board, but that we've done quite a bit. And so Ms. Francis will talk about one of our tweaks. And then at the end, I wanted to just let you all know, I think I mentioned at the last work session, wanted to let you all know about some work we're doing around the new policies and regulations and give you a handout so you can see that work. That should be brief, but just so you'll have it in your hand. So with that said, Angie is going to talk about the budget codes. Sometimes when, not only when you're running the Learning Center, but if you're the Vocational Director or the Associate Superintendent for Support Services or whatever area, you have lots of different codes that you have to manage because the money is from the federal government or from the state or from a grant. So Angie is going to do that. I think she's also giving you a handout.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Nolte asked that I just give a quick review tonight about our funding sources and then a little bit about our HCLC funding. Your first handout just shows all the fund codes. Most of you are very familiar with these things, but very quickly, Fund 1, of course, is our State Public School Fund that comes directly to us from NCEDPI. You have, Technology is the only fund in that program, in that fund that carries over everything else we zero out at the end of the year. Fund 2 is our local current expense. That's our county appropriation plus funds and forfeitures plus ABC revenues. Fund 3 is federal grant funds. Again, that comes directly to us from NCEDPI. Fund 4 is capital outlay. That is our capital funds that come from the county, but it also is where we post in our general ledger where we're buying buses, paying for yellow buses, if we use lottery or ADM money, or if we use fund balance at the county. All of that has to be posted in Fund 4. Fund 5 is enterprise funds. That's child nutrition. Some counties will run their after-school programs through Fund 5 as an enterprise fund and in theory it is. We keep our after-school down in Fund 8 and the reason is we don't really take all those revenues in. We just pay the employees and then invoice the school. They write us a check back and that comes to zero. By keeping that in Fund 8, then all the Fund 5 transactions are solely child nutrition and it's her cash, it's what her cash looks like in revenues and so it just makes it a little bit cleaner. And then finally, Fund 8 is other specific revenue funds and that, those include gifts and grants that are very specific. It's where we charge fees or get reimbursements. We charge tuition. And then down below those fund categories, I've listed our Fund 8 programs and just very quick, out to the, under program title, out to the right, if it is, if the headwaters of that money is federal or state, I've indicated that in the program title. A lot of these are funds that they thread together with other state and federal money. 314 is, of course, Workforce Investment Act and that is our HCLC program dollars. 413 is NC pre-K and we, in addition to, we use this pot of money to pay for our NC, our pre-K teachers, but in conjunction with that, we pay for the TAs in those classrooms with Title 1 money. So again, it's, it's not just, you know, this is covering all of our pre-K. We, we use some other sources to support that, those programs. I think we have six of those. The next one is 461. That was an HCLC direct grant award from the state. The difference in some of these, for example, in 314, that's a spend get reimbursed grant and then in 461, that's a state grant and that money is actually in our checking account. We've received those funds. 502 is STEM. That's a state grant. Our elementary and middle school use that to support STEM programs in the schools. 032, that is, mirrors our Local 32 and our State 32 and that's our EC program. And they just have a lot of different grants. They get grants from ARC, SHAC. We have a soil and water grant in there and it's just where those teachers in our EC program will write grants and we put it in there and then we separate them out using a user one code in the string account. 840 is an AT&amp;T grant award. Again, that threads with the HCLC direct grant and Workforce Investment Act. PRC 12 is driver's ed. That's where we put the driver's ed fees that we charge our students. That threads with our state driver's ed allotment. 704, facility use fees. I think everyone is familiar with that. 706 is activity bus use fees. 301 is JROTC reimbursement. Again, we pay some of our ROTC instructors out of State 001. We have a Fund 2 ROTC and then this is where we put, where the military sends us half of the salary for, for our ROTC instructors and so we pay a little bit of their salary out of that. They don't reimburse for the benefits. They just reimburse 50% of the MIP. Medicaid Administrative Outreach Program, that is federal. And what that is, that comes to us, we are allowed to charge a percentage of salary and benefits for leadership in our schools, principals, assistant principals, lead teachers, school, school counselors, those folks that are in leadership that are working with our EC students. We're able to charge a piece of their salary and benefits and we get that reimbursed back to us. That nets about $200,000 to $300,000 a year. Again, that is used in our EC program along with our Federal 60 and State 32 and State 63 funds and Local 32. Lots of money to run our EC program. The next one, 306, that's fee for service. That again is an EC program and that is where our occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech language folks, they actually work with our children. It's just like a doctor's office. They go into a software and put down, we've offered 30 minutes of speech language services and we get a Medicaid reimbursement on that. Again, that's, helps with support our EC program. 740 is pre-K tuition. We have a few self-paid pre-K kids. This year, we had one pre-K child that paid the whole year and then another child that paid for a couple of months and then I guess moved or transferred out. And then finally, 817 is our E-Rate reimbursement and that threads together with State 15, State 73, and then we also have a Fund 2 technology budget.
Let me give an example or two and then that might help this make sense more because I know you guys just don't deal with this stuff every day, all these numbers and lines and codes. So just a couple of examples that might help you when you're looking at budgets and in relation to the Learning Center too. So the fund code up front is probably obvious to some of you who've been on the board a long time, but literally when you're looking at a budget code and you'll see those sometimes on the financial reports, that fund source is the first number in the code. So it'll say 1 dash and then there are other codes so that we know that's state money. 2 is local. 3 is, we know that's federal money. We see that a lot with a federal grant or with special ed money. 4 is capital outlay typically from the county. Enterprise fund, that's around child nutrition. And 8 is then all that other stuff that is really our money and we don't send that out to charters or anyone else because it's money that's working just for our school system. So for example, just give you several examples here. Fourth grade teacher writes a grant to Metro, I'm making this up, Metropolitan Life to do a science project and Metropolitan Life gives $500 to that fourth grade teacher. Well, that money came from Metropolitan Life or some other benefactor to that teacher and is intended to be spent on those children in that teacher's room at that school. So we put it in Fund 8 and that's what it's designated to support the science instruction that we might be paying for out of Code 1 or Code 2. So that's a lot how Fund 8 works. Just another example that I know that you all see from time to time during board meetings in, in finance and in buildings and grounds. Let's look at the activity bus fee, 706. So what we have done there for quite some time, we actually reduced the fee so that there was not unlimited spending on activity buses. We said to the schools, "We're going to charge you a certain amount per mile, a dollar or something."
Dollar twenty.
Dollar twenty per mile. It was higher than that. We reduced it. And so what we do, so they're not, you know, driving three hours when they could get by just driving an hour, we charge them and then we put that money, we don't want that money going to anyone else. It's for transportation and for buses. And so we put that money that we receive from that particular fee from the school and they may be giving us back local athletic money that we gave him or money that they took up for people to go on the field trip to use the activity bus, but we put it in that code, 607. And then the Transportation Director in conjunction with Dr. Putnam, and it was, you know, previous transportation directors in conjunction with Dr. Garrett or myself, we will periodically take those funds and buy bus cam, cameras for buses or seats that pre-K children can sit in on a bus. And sometimes we'll even take it and put it with other funds or just use these funds and we'll buy an activity bus. So that's how Fund 8 works. It's our money inside the system. Someone has given it just to us, not to any other school or district, and then we can spend it back inside a program or department to support the regular operation of the program. So I use that example because what we have with the Learning Center is we have, you know, teachers coming out of Code 1 and 2 and then we have other expenses like power, water, building upkeep, phone lines, things like that coming out of our other lines and then the grants that Kyle and Brookley and other people go out and get are, can be used alongside of our primary funds to run the program. And we rely a lot on WIOA. It has funded many salaries for us for quite some time. So there's just a couple of examples of how the codes relate to not only WIOA but the Transportation Department or a school grant, something like that. You have questions for Angie or any of us just about, you know, the general processes for the funds?
I have one. I know the legislators have tried to get in the Fund 8.
Yes, they have.
Which of these programs would they be dipping into, wanting to get into to give to charter schools or whoever?
Yeah, they'd love to get into all of it and that's an opinion of mine, but I think it's an accurate opinion. And to this point, they have been unsuccessful. And I'll just speculate here since I'm giving an opinion, I think in a hurry, they would lose a lawsuit in a real quick hurry. So the AT&amp;T money is a grant Kyle got some time back. It's about gone, but let's just use that as an example. So AT&amp;T or our school foundation or Kiwanis or Metropolitan Life or whomever decides they're going to give a certain amount of money to a certain school system or a certain teacher for grants. And that's what the grant's written for and that's how it's to be used. You can really only spend money the way you write your grant agreement with the people who send you the money. If the legislature, and again, I'm speaking my opinion here, if the legislature took that money and gave it to a charter, then I think the benefactor who provided the money in the first place could sue them and could very likely win. And I'm not an attorney, but they could easily go to court and say, "I didn't give that money to that charter school. I gave that money to this middle school or this elementary school." So right now, Fund 8 is okay and, and as you can see just by looking at the list of things on there, there are things that we do for ourselves. And when I say ourselves, our children, the Medicaid reimbursement, that's our people serving our children. We get a reimbursement and then we turn that around and help pay our people who provided the service in the first place or something like akin to that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. There was a few things I didn't understand how it worked.
Well, it's confusing, it's confusing to me and I've looked at it a long time. You know, it's, it can be quite confusing. Anything else just about how the money rolls around? That's not the very versatile terminology, but how it works? Okay. Kyle Ledford is here. He's our director. Actually, I did some back reading today and in, I believe it was 2011, he went to the state legislature, state school board rather, and asked them if we could start delaying dropouts for a period of time until we could recover them and get them graduated. And that actually led to a state board policy that everyone can use now. So he, along with Steve Williams and Dr. Garrett and myself, put the program together and then the, most of the funds have come from grants and other places. So Kyle, I believe, is going to talk about just WIOA and answer any questions. And then Brookley is going to talk about manpower.
Thank you. For, in order to put this in context, I'm going to give you just a little bit of history because it's, WIOA is a federal program and it's a spider web. So the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act of 2014 is WIOA. WIOA is a federal-funded program designed to assist adults, dislocated workers and disadvantaged youth ages 16 to 24 to complete secondary school and obtain unsubsidized employment, continue post-secondary training or enroll in the military. WIOA is the first attempt by the Congress to revise the United States Worker Training System since 1992. A version of WIOA has been available really since the Johnson years, but really in the past, versions of WIOA include the Comprehensive Employment Training Program, which was CETA, signed by Nixon '73. The Job Training Partnership Act, JTPA, signed by Reagan in 1982. The Workforce Investment Act, signed by Clinton in 1992. The common things for all three of these programs prior to WIOA was that they were all designed in one way or another to address welfare to work systems. They all had youth components. They were controlled by appointed boards whose membership consisted largely of agency heads with little or no ties to workforce. And the Southwestern Commission over in Jackson County has always been the fiscal agent for the funds. All three had some success, but limited success. Haywood County Schools began serving these disadvantaged youth in the early 1980s under CETA. I don't know how many of you remember Bob Hill, but Bob Hill, a teacher at Pisgah, a longtime teacher at Pisgah, was my student teaching supervisor and he, his first job in Haywood County was CETA. David Savage, his first job in Haywood County was JTPA. And my first job in Haywood County and consequently the only job, started with JTPA. In August of 1986, I wrote a $20,000 JTPA grant and I've operated the program ever since in one way or another. In 1998, the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, WIOA, was introduced into Congress because that this act moved the funding out of political realm into more of a workforce-based program. The Board and WIOA is mandated that 90% of those folks be actual people who go to work every day in the communities. And because of that and because that the money is 80% mandated to be spent on dropout recovery, it took 15 years to pass. Finally, and not in 2014, you had the Workforce Innovation Act of 2014. As Dr. Nolte said, we in 2007, in order to address the fifth highest dropout rate in the state, Haywood County, without a lot of the factors that Charlotte has, for example, in 2006 had the fifth highest dropout rate in the state. So in order to do that with a $100,000 grant from AT&amp;T with local lottery money left over and with WIOA funds, we established the Alternative Learning Center, which is the Haywood Community Learning Center, as a pilot program for WIOA. In the early years of, in the early years of the program, WIOA funding accounted for 90% of our funding. Since 2008, this percentage has been reduced by two-thirds due to an instructional structure change, the vast network of established community supports that we've had and our successful history of writing grants. Including WIA, WIOA grants, we've been successfully procured $5.2 million in grants since 2008. In 2019-20, our WIOA grant is $200,000 and that will account for one-third of our operating expense. We'll use these funds to pay salary and benefits for two full-time employees, both case managers who work directly with students. In addition, we'll use these WIOA funds to pay for travel, supplies, instructional materials and software, student accident insurance, HCLC food, computers and furniture, and in desperate cases, student emergency services. And that would be if a kid needed a power bill paid for them so their power would stay on. We do that sometimes. We also take homeless kids and set them up in apartments sometimes. And that's the two things really that we do with that, with that side. Our largest expenditure next year outside of salaries will be $20,000 that we will use to provide direct work experience for our kids to work with folks in our community. So if you, if your career goal is to be an electrician, then you do what you need to do, follow the rules, work hard, put your best foot forward and you're going to get a job with electrician as part of your last semester with us. And that lasts anywhere from eight to, eight weeks to a semester. WIOA is a vital component of our program. Without it, we couldn't provide all the social supports or work experiences that often make the difference in, in kids that we have to complete school and move forward. Prior to the implementation of HCLC, working for WIA, I would typically serve 50 to 75 kids a year closely with the community college to get a GED. Since inception of HCLC, we've graduated over 600 kids who left our schools. For many years, we've been successful in WIOA because it's been about the student and it needs to stay about the student. If students prospered, so did the program. That's why we've had it since 1980 because we've always done our job. We've always been able to meet performance or exceed performance and therefore we always get money that we ask for. And that's just, that's the bottom line. I've been doing this for 34 years and I'm going to retire in February 2020 and I appreciate all that you guys have done for HCLC, for me personally and for our program over the years. And I ask that you continue to fully support the HCLC and Brookley as she sits in my chair. And I'll be happy to answer any question you have.
Let me just add a couple of thoughts because you were at the meeting where the topic came up. First thing, oh. Sorry, mic on. Let me add a couple of thoughts and then questions for Kyle about WIOA, WIOA and then Brookley can talk about manpower. One of the things that I learned after that meeting was that some other providers in the region do actually pay a fee to people who get their GED. And we have not done that and really do not want to for several reasons. The first reason is we don't really want to do GED. That's, and I have talked to Kyle about that many times, as recent as earlier this week. I've talked to Dr. Parker about that at the college and that, the GED program is a great program and we're glad to refer the right students there, but it does not help Haywood County Schools at all. So our primary focus with the Alternative Learning Center is to give students a North Carolina diploma. And at this time, probably 99% of those diplomas have Central Haywood High School on them. Every now and then, there will be a special dual enrollment contract with Tuscola or Pisgah. So we, you know, we have served a couple of kids who started with us and then got referred to GED or came in from somewhere else and we've served a couple of those kids. And we've been, we've been strongly encouraged to serve more by David Garrett, one of the directors over at WIOA, and we will make plans to do that. But we really don't ever want GED to be a big part of what we do. So that, that's one of the reasons, just philosophically, it doesn't help us. Number two, we could probably give money to our adult high school graduates if we wanted to. I read the policy that WIOA has that allows that, but our philosophy from the very beginning, when we put the program together, with Dr. Garrett's significant help, you know, as the superintendent, it's hard to get stuff started like that without the superintendent and she was very helpful. But our philosophy all along the way was, you know, we don't want to, pardon the example here, but you know, we don't want to give them a fish, we want to teach them how to fish. And so what we want to do along the way is give them some job experiences and Brookley will talk a lot about that. The third reason, and I've talked to Dr. Parker about this some, that we really don't want to be involved in, in getting a GED for people. Not our philosophy, doesn't help us. But the third reason is, is if we took our WIOA funds and provided all the services that we could legally provide, then we would supplant what the college is doing. Is we could, we could literally provide that instruction for every student up there and we do not want to do that. We don't think that's good for Haywood County Schools, doesn't help our dropout rate or graduation rate. It also does not help the college because their adult education program is a valuable program or has been a very valuable program for them and I expect will continue to. So I just wanted to add those things in before you all had the opportunity to ask questions of Kyle regarding W. of Kyle regarding WIOA.
Any questions for Kyle?
I will tell you that Dr. Parker and I will meet, I told her that we, that I need to meet with her in a couple of weeks after, after this session. And she's in Raleigh right now working, but when she gets back, because we will need to provide some WIOA services because the fiduciary agent, like the example I gave while ago, if they give you the money and they want you to use it in a certain way, you have to do some of that to continue to get the money. But we will have to carefully craft an addendum to our agreement with them to make sure that, you know, that we're not supplanting their work and make sure that we're not getting into the GED business. So that's something that we'll work on near the beginning of the school year, but we'll meet in a couple of weeks, probably with David Garrett, the director over there, so all three of us are on the same page. Any questions for Kyle?
Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate all you've done, and I enjoyed your, your graduation. That was awesome. I had 40 people, if you guys didn't go. Young lady that spoke, her child was sitting right beside of me, so it was pretty good. It was a hard one. And talking about the GED, I appreciate it. You know, the GED program, the college has graduated 120 people, so they've done pretty well with three full-time and four part-time. The thing I like about it being at the college is when they graduate, they walk, they're welcome to a program if they're interested. And that's the biggest part about it being at the college. But if we can help send students, by all means, I'm about, you know, Alice Sinsley is a good friend of mine, it was out, she was at Astamy growing up. And she's with Mountain Projects, and they had a big thing over in Beaver Dam last year, I think it was last year or before last. And one of their things was GED, and I said, well, that's fine, but I don't want kids going to have GED and then sent out the door with a $200 check. Because we need, and what you just said, they need to be enrolled, enlisted, or employed. And I think we're all on the same mission, so I appreciate that. I do wonder, give me a breakdown on how, you said this $200,000 is spent with two full-time employees?
Case managers, you want to go down the list again on the $200,000?
Well, one of the emails from David was saying there was a project manager, is that what it's called?
What?
David had wrote down project manager in that email. She forwarded.
But he's probably talking about Brookly as a program director.
He called her a project manager, but it's program director. Okay. So.
Well.
Give us an idea of how it's.
Sure.
That's just.
In the old days, WIOA paid 100% of my salary. That's what I did. As we implemented the HCLC and we started getting grants, then, you know, if you're going to work with WIOA kids, if you're going to get paid with WIOA money, you work with WIOA kids. And so I had to find other revenue streams because all the kids in our building isn't necessarily WIOA kids. About 80%, 86% of them are WIOA. Now, we've never had two case managers before. We've always had just one, and Brookly's been doing that pretty much for the last four years. But we have grown in, in our caseload so, so much that we are having to add another one. We're limited only by the funding that we have. We could serve 150 kids in WIOA if we, if we had the available funding to do so, but two case managers will be funded 100% by that. We provide supports that school systems have a very difficult time providing on their own. The flexibility in the instruction, we have instructional software, our kids can work at 3:00 in the morning at their kitchen table, just like they can in Mark Etheridge's classroom. Food, clothing, we have a, we have supports throughout the community that is, how much did, did we say Secret Santa was this year? Well, every one of our kids had Secret Santa, and they all went out with close to $1,000 worth of stuff.
Easily.
Easily. And so, you know, that's the kind of things that, that we do. But now with our WIOA money, like I said, we have kids in there that by definition are homeless, and sometimes we provide a light bill to keep their lights on. Sometimes they literally don't, they're been sleeping in their car. And so we go to DSS, we go to Mountain Projects, we go to the, every other place we can that also does, does those kind of things, and then we can do some things they can't do, like we'll, we'll front the money for them to get an apartment and that kind of thing, all in the effort that they get to come to school.
When you say front, do they have to pay it back?
No.
Oh, okay, you're just tapping on mine.
Yeah, we will pay the landlord the $300 it takes for them to move in. And then typically, they go on another program, say a Mountain Projects, that will provide Section 8 housing for them.
We, we pay the manpower contract out of the WIOA money. Most years. Again, you can see from, from Angie's presentation that on any given year, you might use a fund date money just a little differently depending upon what last year's grant said and what the state is or is not funding. So doesn't relate much to Kyle's program, but sometimes we'll be paying for something out of fund eight. Well, I'll use the bus cameras, for example. We might be pulling that out of the activity bus fund. Well, if the state just happens to give us money for something like that one year, then we don't spend fund date money on it that particular year. So there is some fluidity, you still have to follow state or federal regulations, whatever the source of the money is, but there is some, some fluid activities you can take based upon your main funding sources, which is state and federal, state, local, and federal.
Can I add something?
Sure.
But just to kind of, you're asking about the personnel in WIOA. If you look, and I know this does not surprise the board, but if you look at 2018, 19, in fact, I have the report from DPI, across all fund source, last year, we spent about, not including child nutrition, we spent about $65 million. 87% of that was in salary and benefits, so only 13% of that was spent on supplies, technology, those types of things. In contrast, if you take what we spent out of Fund One with the teachers and anything that runs through Fund Eight for HCLC, if you picked that up and put it over here, in contrast, they've spent last year about 79% in salary and benefits and 21% on student needs. I don't know if that helps paint the picture or.
Well, I was going to say, you know, our, our monies, our WIOA money is for student support. It's not for student incentive. We, we don't believe that that is good thing. You know, there's a mountain of research that says that's, does not help kids to pay kids for certain things. So that's where we're different than other programs.
I appreciate that because that was something that David had.
Well, we have drastically philosophical differences.
David, and this is an open, honest disagreement, and we have a good relationship, obviously, with them. Kyle may not, but we do, we, we've been having, we've been getting funding from them from a long time. But you, one of the things that they do is they just do allow that, and just philosophically speaking, and they have lots of, of program providers scattered across the region. But our, our philosophy is, is, you know, we want to teach you how to do it and show you how to do it and give you some experience doing it because the $100 or $200 is going to be gone if you, if you get that. And so we, we think it's a much better investment to put them in a safe place or a warm place and feed them and, and give them a work experience.
I agree with that 100%. And one thing, Kyle, Bobby and I talked to Kyle, I said, I like the way you look outside the box on.
Some, some people do, some people don't.
I have told Kyle I just want him near the box. That's my, that's my goal for Kyle, he's near the box.
One of the things, you know, you mentioned, I'm going to kind of work for the school system, not that you said.
Yeah.
And I've known you all my life.
Right.
And then I watched you develop this program from the beginning in the old sixth grade building at, at Waynesville Middle School, Waynesville Junior High at the time. And the, the thing that touches me the most about this whole thing is, you know, a lot of people are excited to have a job, but not everybody allows their passion to grow a program that outlasts them. And I really applaud you for that, and I think my hat's off to you.
Appreciate it.
So I did want to ask, so you're, the kids that go in your program, you said the last semester, they can, they can choose to work like an electrician or, is that a choice or is that like a, they have to do it?
No, they don't have to do it.
Okay, that's what I was.
There's, there, there are some kids that on day one, we, well, every kid that comes to our place is referred by principal. You don't get an interview unless a principal refers you to us. And on day one, we ask the simple question, what do you want to do when you grow up? Some people know, and if they tell us, then we help them along that, that way. A person that I was describing that electrician helper would be that person that would typically in the last semester, because the next thing we're going to do with them is take him to the program at, at HCC. A lot of them say, well, I don't have clue, idea. So we have educational software, we have a thing called virtual job shadowing that puts a kid inside a job, and they go through that, they go through OSHA training, they go through EverFi for financial literacy, they go through all of those things in, in addition to their math, science, and history.
Just a little background, and y'all know I can be long-winded, I told you that during the interview, but it, it's just, there's not a black and white answer for every kid that goes there. What, what we have required, Dr. Garrett and myself, is that when we have a kid that's a dropout, or is a potential dropout, we wanted one person in the school system to screen all of the transcripts, okay? And that has been Kyle for many years. I have done a few of those this summer, just so I could sit with the college and sort of show them what counts for a particular credit. And then after that, the people may or may not be in Kyle's program, depending upon what the referral is. And even the ones that are in his building, he said a little earlier, they may not be WIOA qualified. So what happens is literally the principal makes the referral, okay? And then there's, they make an appointment, the paperwork gets to Kyle, sometimes like it should, and sometimes it's harder to get. The, the kid goes down there sometimes with a parent, more often than not, without a parent, and he looks at the transcript and goes, you really need to be up at the adult high school, they can get you out of here quicker than we can, it's going to be a better situation, we refer to them. And then we would not provide any WIOA services to that student unless they significantly qualified, because they're not really in our building a whole lot. They would go literally from one of our more traditional schools, straight to the adult high school, the partnership we have up there. Same kind of thing. Another referral that we make is the GED, and I think in the previous school year, I don't know the total number for this year, but if, if I'm remembering correctly, we referred 23 in 17, 18, GED kids. And then we had two that were already being served, and we're WIOA kids, they qualified, they were already being served at the learning center, we were trying to get them graduated, and it wasn't happening. And so we did help them with some GED stuff, too. And then the third referral, which is the one we really want because we have more control over it and we're going to get a greater number of graduates, is we say to the, I'm saying kid, the student, the recovered, or dropout we want to recover, we say to that student, come right down here, you'll, you'll be in the HCLC program, you need X number of credits, and we'll get you a diploma from Central Haywood High School if you'll stay. And a good number of those kids are WIOA kids because they're struggling, they're behind on credits to begin with for whatever reason, so they're struggling. So it takes a lot of management to remember which kid qualifies for WIOA money support and which kid doesn't, and then just making sure we have the right ones in our building and the right ones up at the college. And some of the kids at the college will qualify for WIOA support, but not all of them. Maybe not even the majority of them, some of them will. So, sorry.
Have to be between, say, 16 and 24. It wouldn't count if, because they are older people that take the GED.
And even if they're between 16 and 24, there are other criteria that they would need to meet.
And typically, you know, if a kid is 19, we, we typically have people in our building, the oldest kids in our building are 19. And so if you're 19 or older, you, I automatically refer you there.
To the adult high.
To the adult high school because that's what the adult high school is designed to do. And our power school, for example, won't let us, unless they're EC certification, we can't give a diploma to someone over 21. And for a kid to walk into my building that's 19 years old with three credits, I'm going to have him two years. And so it would be, it would be bad on my part to keep a child, or keep a person from doing that. So I need to send them on, that's where they need to be, and that's what we do.
Let's slip Brookly to talk about manpower, and then we can ask questions to her and additional ones for Kyle, if you'd like.
Hi, thank you for having me. So in reference back to the manpower partnership agreement that you guys saw at the last board meeting, I really want to go in detail about the going rate that you guys questioned. The going rate is based on a markup that manpower does, and that depends on the pay rate that we have for the student. So I'm going to give you an example. I typically pay a student between $10 or $12 an hour to do a work experience, and it kind of depends on the job and the competitive that they get paid. So at $12 an hour that I'm paying a kid, the markup is 43.75%. So that brings it to $17.25 an hour that manpower bills us. So the difference between that and the $12 is $5.25 an hour that goes to manpower. Now, I know that may seem like a lot, but if you think about all the stuff that manpower has provided in the partnership, it, it doesn't even touch it. So some of the things that they provide is OSHA training for students who are under 18 years old to work heavy equipment, do the safety. They provide unemployment, they provide all the taxes, they provide all the liability, so that includes workers' comp. They even include drug screenings, background checks, they manage all the time sheets online, and then they send them to me to approve them, and once I get an approval, then they send me an invoice. So they manage all of that for us. They process all the entry paperwork to begin a job. And once they're in manpower system, it's really easy for them to transition and go back to manpower. So once they graduate and finish their work experience, and that work experience didn't lead to a job for them, a permanent job, they can go back to manpower, be on their system, and they can get benefits, and it's easy to transition straight into employment. So that's all the stuff that manpower provides for us, which is a lot if you think about it. I mean, just the paperwork alone is a beast. And so to me, what I've seen, I've seen the value in work experiences for these students. They are being taught soft skills that, I mean, you think about a 16, 17, 18-year-old, this is their first job. And in the, in this small town, it's really important to build that network. So these people that they go in the community and work for, they can add on their resumes. So that's the biggest thing that I've seen come out of these work experiences, are these students build this network that they can use on their resumes, this experience and references. So with the soft skills, they learn the communication skills, they learn job-related skills, ability to follow instructions, time on task, their initiative. And we grade these students individually two times, at midpoint and at their final evaluation. And we do that with their employer, their. And we do that with their employer, their supervisor, so the employer's manpower, but with their supervisor on the work site, with the student and with me. So we kind of go through that in detail with them. And that's two times throughout their work experience. And a work experience can range up to twelve weeks is typically what I do, just so that they can really get comfortable, they can really learn what they need to learn on the job. And it, and it really does, it really helps them. So some of the work experiences that I've done in the past and that I'm, I'm actually doing currently, um, a big one is auto mechanics. I have a lot of students that are interested in cosmetology, so I put them in hair salons. A huge one is CNA, so I use Autumn Care Nursing Home. They also provide, um, occupational therapy and physical therapy at the nursing home for students who are interested in that. Doctors' offices, uh, vet offices, electricians. We've had a student at clerk of court in the register of deeds office. And I've just recently tapped into Midwest for the radiology department, which has been a big breakthrough, because there's a lot of barriers that they have to go through to get that job. Also, um, mental health. So with Meridian, I have several students who are interested in social work and becoming therapists. So they're getting to work in day treatment programs there to really get hands-on on what they're going to be doing. Um, so those are some of the work experiences that I do, and that's just like a drop in the bucket. I usually run about ten students a year in a work experience. Um, this year I'm going to, I'm pushing for twelve to fifteen, because I, I did a lot through the summer and I'm hoping to do a lot more coming up when school starts back. So. And that's kind of manpower in the, in the skinny version of it. So I know there probably is questions and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I hope.
Yes.
Would you tell them how many kids, about how many kids that will go through our work experience and ended up with a job?
Probably about eighty percent of our students end up working with them.
So eighty percent of our students end up staying at the place where they did work?
Or the job will have them go to, like CNAs, so they don't have their CNA certificate yet. So like Autumn Care, the last three kids that I've put there has helped push them through school to get that certificate and has hired them on. So in the meantime, they're like a CNA's assistant, but they hire them on.
I don't know if I told you Brookley's last name. I think it's Nickel when I introduced her a while ago.
Nicholson.
Nicholson, that's right. I just saw, uh, father-in-law Nick the other day.
Yes.
Yeah, Nicholson.
Nicholson.
I just said Brookley, Nicholson.
That's okay.
Brookley, have the people that have participated, like the employers, are they being very cooperative with you? It sounded like they've been willing to work with you.
Oh, yes. And it's good to be from this community, because it's all about who you know here. That's why I said the biggest thing is that network that these kids build. Um, so yes, they've all been really receptive. And there's a lot that I, I have to do with the employer or the work site. Um, we do supervisor handbooks and I go through that. It describes child, child labor laws. It breaks down every, um, goals, rules, regulations, everything. So we go through, it's a pretty thick, and I have a copy of it if you'd like. It's, I mean, you can see it's a pretty thick paperwork that I go through. Um, and then there's a participant and a supervisor. So I sit with them and kind of walk through all of that with them. And, and it's a breath of fresh air when they realize that manpower takes all the liability off the employer or off the work site. Um, so they don't have to worry about anything. They really just have to provide a meaningful and safe work experience for these students. And, and that means a lot to these employers.
I, I look at it as like our temp service. It's, it's, it's been a godsend for our company to be able to use a temp service and that rate that you're talking about is not out of line.
No.
For what they're doing.
For what they're doing.
All you do is you call them up and say you need somebody and they show up, they've already been trained, they, and they're carrying all the parts you just said, the drug screening, the unemployment taxes, the, all the federal stuff, they're doing all that. So all I do is tell them how many hours they're working a week and then they pay them and.
Right. And a drug screen I found out today with, for manpower is fifty-two dollars alone, just for the drug screening. So.
So I mean, that rate is not outrageous from what private industry is.
Right.
Just as a point of reference.
Yes, definitely.
Do the employees get any kind of tax incentive or any kind of benefit other than the employers?
That.
Not for
For using.
experiences that we do, but for example, if a kid does a, a good job in a work experience, if the employer is interested in hiring the kid, there's another WIWA program called On-the-Job Training, OJT. And we could, although we don't very often, I have before, uh, written contracts for employers and they get tax benefits. They pay a certain point of the, uh, a certain part of the wage for a certain timeframe. And the government pays the other part. And then after that is done, if the employer hires the person, then they'll get a tax benefit for the next two, two, three years. So it is an incentive for employers to do that.
Uh, other questions?
I don't have a question, I do have a comment. If those twenty percent that don't get a job wants to push paper, we are, we are hiring.
Yes.
Have any experience in heavy lifting or water hose or dirty pushing dusty paper?
Well, a lot of them that didn't get the job, it's because it, that job was not what they thought it was, which is still successful to me. I mean, that's the point of a work experience, is to get your hands wet and see, is this right for me or not? A lot of them go into CNA and they don't realize they pass away and you have to do some dirty grimy stuff. And when they see that, they're like, yep, that's not what I want to do. So to me, that's, that's huge. Because instead of wasting time and money at college, they can get that before that, and there's no risk.
We did, I'm just, we have hired a couple of kids right out of high school, but one had been a farmer. I drove tractors and stuff. And the other one had worked at auto parts, drove a forklift and a hand truck. And so they had done heavy lifting and stuff. So there is a possibility.
And we have a bunch of those kind of kids.
And they have to go through the, uh, employment security.
We've had, we've had lots of kids go to work for jobs.
If you get somebody good, let me know, because we, I'm telling you, we have a lot of turnover. We need some good, we need some good local employees. Well, this is.
Well, you're welcome to come to our business and do that.
People that want to work, you know.
We'd be happy to have you.
We have a bunch of great kids that work really hard, because that's their survival. So.
Because, um, there's a, this fallacy, when my dad worked at the mill twenty-seven years ago, had two thousand employees, Bobby might have been there. There was a lot of jobs where people sat around. We only have a few jobs now, because they've cut the workforce down to, they have eight hundred people doing what two thousand used to do. It's more automated, but there's spread the work around a little thinner, you know, I mean, more or whatever. Anyway, it's not what it used to be. So they have this idea, oh, I used to sit around.
Right.
I appreciate you all coming in. I had a lot of questions and, um, you know, ideas that, and I appreciate you coming in and explaining some of this stuff, which I talked to Dr. Naughton a lot. And I appreciate your program and, um, very good.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, uh, excuse Kyle and Brookley and Angie. Angie, she's got to go do homework. Uh, change directions just for a second, and, um, Dr. Putnam's going to talk about a couple of capital projects and related funding. Thank you very much, Nickelson. I knew that. I just getting old.
You said just thinking about her dad or father-in-law?
Father-in-law's Nick Nicholson taught at Pisgah. I saw him one day.
All right. I will, I'll provide you with, with a couple of items. One is just, uh, for context, I guess you would say. I'll start with the Pisgah High School Intensive Intervention Classroom. Uh, you have already approved, um, the, the build or creation of those intensive intervention classrooms at Pisgah. Uh, to date, we have not gotten started on it, uh, simply because we wanted to make sure we were, um, creating exactly what the school needed and what these students needed. Um, I will tell you, the last couple of months have been just a little bit like whack-a-mole. You think you've got it nailed down and up pops another mole. Whack that one down and up pops another mole. So, um, I do think, um, and y'all were very gracious in what, what you said to go forth and do, which was make sure the kids had every, anything and everything they needed. So I appreciate that. That accompanied with, you know, um, being good stewards and making sure we don't build in excess or provide anything that we don't need. And so finding that balance has been a back and forth. Um, some factors that played into that, you have a new principal. He's not fully experienced a year and, and, and didn't really know what all of his needs are quite yet. Um, that factored in with me being new, um, and learning the budget. And so where we have finally rested, there are two ex, uh, classrooms in F Building. That is the addition, uh, where they put in the pulp and paper. Uh, there are two classrooms in there, uh, that the principal and Ms. Stevenson feel are suitable. Uh, there is going to have to be a good bit of ren- renovation. Those two classrooms, uh, are divided by a wall. Uh, a good portion, probably eighty percent, if not all of the wall between those two classrooms will be removed. There will be a bathroom built in center proximity, uh, of the two classrooms, um, that will meet the needs of those students. Uh, there will be changing tables and there will be, um, a kitchen top area uh, with washers, dryers, stoves, all the things that, uh, they would need for that classroom. The cost for that is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's cost plus. So it's going to come in at around a hundred and twenty-five thousand plus. We feel like, uh, we've, we've already had a, a builder out to take a look at it, to see, you know, what's the scope of work. We do know that we will have to get, uh, sewer into those classrooms. We will have to get water into those classrooms. We will have to get, um, vents and other things into those classrooms. Projected, uh, both builder, Joe and myself feel like a completion date of November. Uh, Thanksgiving, pri- just prior to Thanksgiving, no later than the Thanksgiving break. Um, we've already met with the teacher and kind of explained how it will work. We will build a, a temporary construction wall so that the kids and teacher can occupy a portion of the area while construction continues to occur throughout the school year, so we don't have to push this a whole nother year. And so that's kind of where we're at. So it, the cost is a hundred and twenty-five thousand a, at a minimum. It's cost plus. Which brings us to how to fund it. Um, we got a couple of options, and then I'll make a recommendation on, um, what we can do. And then I'll entertain any thoughts you have on this. We could, uh, certainly eliminate one of the capital projects that was in that nine hundred thousand. You know, the county, we requested nine hundred thousand in capital funds and they were gracious and granted us those nine hundred, that nine hundred thousand in capital funds. And we built out projects. Many of those projects were for HVAC replacement, floor replacement at River Bend, um, a maintenance truck. There was a variety of things. We can eliminate one of those, uh, to pay for this. Or, um, what I would propose is actually going into, um, lottery funds to be able to complete this project, so that we don't, um, delay any of the, the projects that we had initially laid out in that capital budget. Um, so that's kind of what, what I'm thinking at, having looked at it. And, and so going into lottery funds as opposed to eliminating one of the capital projects we already set out for this year. Uh, at this time, I'll just listen to any feedback or entertain any questions.
Chairman, can I interact on that?
You, you sure can.
All right. Uh, I thank you for working on this, Dr. Putnam, and I appreciate the, I'm glad we don't have to build a new building at this time, because that will save us some funding, but yet we're going to get the project completed that needs to be done. Uh, and I, I do agree with the point. I know we don't make decisions in this work session, but I do agree with the point that we can, I, I would rather not use this capital funding, because yet we might, we might need that emergency, uh, air conditioning unit replaced. And that's what we laid it out for. And, uh, I think y'all are right on target, your team is, and, and I, I appreciate that. I'm, I, I think it's a great thing and the completion date's even more en- entertaining to me as well, because I thought it'd take a little longer to get this done. So I appreciate the expectancy on getting it done as well.
Good deal. Thank you. Um, while you're thinking of other questions, I think the balance right now is about one point two million. Is that what you told me earlier?
It's one point two million, uh, with an anticipated, uh, another six hundred thousand. I'm going to talk to you about another project and some other funds, just so you know, there's, there's a little bit of wiggle uh, with some available funds in other areas if need be.
And we're. About a million is earmarked for the fields to go in next summer, but you're still going to have between two, two and six hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand.
Well, it's probably six safely, but
Yeah.
we don't know what the allocations will be until they come in.
Sixty-seven.
No others.
Sorry. Oh, no, you're good.
Well, that, that was the only thing I was going to question was the remodeling of the two classrooms. That's really saving a lot compared to building the two that we need. Now, do you see two rooms later on adding on? Is that another thing that's even crossing the mind right now?
Well, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure of. The last thing I wanted to do was say, this is sufficient. This is what we're doing. And then have to turn around and say, sorry, board, we're going to have to go back and build four more classrooms.
And I think that was one of the reasons when we talked was we was like, okay, if we have to, let's go ahead and do the classrooms now so that we're not taking those other classrooms, so we wouldn't be crunched for space. But if you're saying you did your due diligence, I commend you.
Over and over and over. Be like, where's Trevor? He's at Pisgah.
I have burned the road up between central office and Pisgah for the last couple of weeks. So, uh, just making sure we get it right. They do, Pisgah does have needs, as does Tuscola. I've asked both principals to compile needs that they have. Um, but additional classrooms was not something that has been provided to me thus far. I do think there's a area to the back of the media center that could be more conducive to the staff that we may remodel at some point in time. It, it's essentially an old computer lab. It doesn't function real well. Uh, but even at that, um, we're in, we're in better shape than a, a full-on, a whole nother extension to the building.
I was going to mention too, um, I was at the Cattlemen's Association, uh, beef roast up at Tuscola, and there's a lot of mowing and landscaping that has been accomplished up there, and it looks pretty dagum good. And I let Todd Trant know that. I saw him up there. So.
I can't take one bit of credit for that. I just, they have done, uh, our maintenance folks and even some of our summer help, they have worked tremendously hard.
And they're coming on around the lower side down there too, I saw.
Right. Yeah, it looks nice.
Tough work.
Yeah, there's one thing I also brought up at the, uh, Cattlemen's Association, and, uh, I know we're getting some new, uh, instructors up there with Mr. Holt and whoever else ends up, uh, being up there at Tuscola, but, uh, up there at Tuscola, but I heard quite a bit of conversation about that they sure need a barn to get their livestock in, so that's probably going to hit you plate one of these days soon.
I'll be ready for it.
I think Mr. Hines, on a side note, either just sent out or will be sending out later today the stuff for the board meeting so you can see that other name that will be proposed Monday. And then, so you can look and see that name. We feel good about that recommendation from Todd.
Very good. They've done a fantastic job, so thanks.
Also want to tell you about another project and you'll see why we have just a little bit of wiggle room. So, the other thing we're working on and just wanted to make you aware of it and know that there are funds being spent and where they're coming from. And you go, "Now, wait a minute, where'd those funds come from?" There is a pot of money held at the county and it's ADM money. Before lottery, they used to allocate ADM money. Many of you are probably more familiar with it than me. And that line item is no longer allocated by the state. However, there is a residual amount of money sitting in a line item at the county level in the amount of seventy-five thousand. And the way that works is for every seventy-five cents that we spend of that money, the county has to match twenty-five cents. And so, we have seventy-five thousand and we're going to ask them to spend twenty-five thousand. That takes us to a hundred thousand total. We have in sales tax, sitting in an account at the county level, approximately eight hundred thousand with an anticipated, it's hard to project, sales tax revenues, but anticipated around six hundred thousand, which takes us to one point four roughly. We're going to ask that we be able to take an additional eighty thousand out of the sales tax revenue. So, the one line, the ADM, we want to dissolve it. It's not a line item that we maintain. It's literally sitting there waiting on us to spend the remaining ADM money that we last received. I think the last year was two thousand nine, ten. So, it's been in there that long. Close that account out. What is this money going for? We want to purchase three intercom systems. If you remember those critical systems that we talked about in the budget, the capital budget process, many of them were incorporated into that capital budget. These are, we're stepping outside of that capital budget and dipping into this ADM fund and the sales tax pot, if you will, to the tune of about a hundred and eighty thousand. And what that will allow us to do is install and replace, or replace, three intercom systems, one at Pisgah, one at Tuscola and one at Waynesville Middle. Those are our three big schools. We're going after them first because they are the most expensive. And while we have funding in large amounts, we want to knock those out. Elementary schools will probably come in around thirty-five to forty thousand, whereas these bigger schools are going to be around approximately sixty thousand. We've got some bids and looked at them, but that's what we're anticipating, about sixty thousand per school. Now, here's the really cool thing and the thing that I'm really excited about. Currently, when we flip an alarm, it sends off, you know, when we have panic switches at the receptionist desk, and if he or she flipped those switches, an alarm goes off. Well, there's not this enormous distinction between fire alarm, tornado and lockdown. These new systems are called Carehawk Systems. That's the brand or the manufacturer. Will allow an audible alert, a voice command, if you will, in opposition to an alarm that maybe the kids are familiar with and maybe they're not. And it'll literally say, "This is a lockdown. This is a lockdown. This is a lockdown," to eliminate any confusion. The other thing that this system will allow us to do is the minute that switch is flipped, it will feed through our intercom system and it'll do, it'll make two calls. The first, as required by North Carolina law, it will go to a monitoring agency. Well, the fact that it goes to a monitoring agency and then back to dispatch creates a lag, but we can't circumvent that process because it's required of us that it go to that monitoring agency first. The Carehawk system will allow it to go through the monitoring agency so that we fulfill that requirement and simultaneously to dispatch, which saves minutes. And most of these events are over in minutes, so minutes matter. The other thing it does is it will be fed into our, the minute that alarm is flipped, it's fed into our network, our wireless network. Any device that is actively using or hitting that network will get an alert that says, "Run, hide, fight." Run, hide, fight, just like was utilized at UNC Charlotte. Instantaneously, anyone that has a device, cellphone, laptop, Chromebook, iPad, that is hitting our network will be notified that a lockdown has in fact been engaged and occurred. So, it's a great safety feature. On a surface level, it sounds like, "Oh, we're getting rid of the old twenty-five-year-old intercoms that don't work well and they glitch and fire off alarms and you have to unplug them and reset them and plug them back in." That's surface level, but it is adding so many safety features to our three, three of our largest schools. And we will continue to work down through all of our schools until they're all replaced. The difficult thing, and I've stated this to you before, is our HVAC, our intercom, our phone systems are all aging out at the same time. So, we're just, again, even if we had unlimited money, we wouldn't want to replace it all at one time so that, you know, our successors that come behind all of us will not be faced with a complete replacement all at one time. They'll inherit, "Oh, okay, they did three intercoms and oh, they did two schools HVAC" and it'll be something a little more manageable. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that because we're talking about spending money for an intensive intervention and using our capital budget and then going into lottery to complete the intensive intervention classroom. I also wanted you to know this was going on out of entirely different pots of money. Any questions or comments for me?
I'd just like to make a comment. That ADM money's been tried to be spent, I don't know how many times.
We tried to do it on the gym over here and then the gym went bad.
The thing is, is it's a testament to the people that came before you guys that, you know, they budgeted it out and the projects came in under budget and that's the reason we've got that money. And you're exactly right, it was circumvented with the lottery money, which it wasn't supposed to be, but it did. And so, I'm glad we're going to use the money and I think it's a worthy cause. And you update, anything we can do to safety our schools, I don't think you're going to have anybody complain about it, especially if it's talking about saving minutes, seconds count. And I think that's going to be crucial.
I appreciate the fact that you guys are being proactive and trying to create networks to provide safety for the kids. Thank you.
I appreciate you saying "you guys," but Trevor's carried that bucket and we've asked him to. And he's done a really good job of networking with law enforcement, the run, hide, fight training that we had, also focused on communication, like what Trevor is describing. So, he's done his homework really well and involved a lot of people.
And he's being humble.
Anything else for Dr. Putnam? My thing is really just to give you something and give you a short explanation. I do plan to come back in August or September and show you on paper at a work session or sometime what you have done to significantly improve our salaries and keep people in the county. It has worked. Also want to show you how much money we've spent and encourage you not to spend too much new money. Because I think once people start receiving their first check this year and they get that step, or they get the duty pay increase, or they get the supplement increase, especially doubling that for all of our classified people, I think they'll really appreciate the work that we've done really since right before Dr. Garrett left because the first increase came when she was here and we did that supplement bump for teachers. So, I do need to come back. There are really just a couple tweaks that I think we need to make and of course, that will be at your discretion and approval. And there's no action tonight, but Allison has been working with Dr. Putnam and Angie and myself to do an incentive bump for managers. In truth, there's not a lot of pay differential between an experienced, full-time cafeteria worker and a manager. So, that and then the only other thing, just much disclosures I can give you guys, the only other group that we've really not looked at and sort of reset in a while is some of our clerical stuff. But what we're going to try to do with what we bring to you is to do it inside the current budget and avoid, if at all possible, any new money. So, Allison, if you wouldn't mind to talk them through the incentive plan?
The original plan that was in your folder, the one-page front and back, disregard that one, it's been updated since then. You should have a two-page one, or actually, it's four pages, but two pages, front and back on your desk. As Dr. Nolte mentioned, there's very little pay difference between one of our child nutrition assistants and one of the cafeteria managers. Our starting pay right now is eleven eighty-five an hour for a employee. For, we have three different levels of cafeteria managers. We have a level fifty-six, fifty-seven and fifty-eight, and that is based on the size of the school. So, for a level fifty-six, it's twelve dollars and fifty-six cents an hour. For a level fifty-seven, that's twelve dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour. And for a level fifty-eight, it's thirteen dollars and one cent an hour. Now, that's at level zero, starting at the bottom. So, obviously, if somebody's got more years of experience, it's going to be higher for either of those, any of those four categories. But there's not a lot of incentive for the cafeteria employee to become a manager. They might get an extra hour or two of work a day, but to add on the extra responsibilities, who wants to do that for a dollar an hour? So, I was looking for a way to try to give them a little extra money and at the same time, give them some goals and measurable things that they could work on that would actually help improve participation and revenues in the schools. There are nine different categories that I have listed here and the first one being sanitation grades. I would say it's very rare that any of the cafeterias have below a ninety-eight percent sanitation grade. So, most of these, most of the managers, this is going to, the first one's going to be an easy, I've got that. Attendance, this is only counting days of missed attendance that students are actually in school, so if they're taking days off on a workday, they're not going to be penalized for that, but days that they're absent when a child is in school, they could earn points for having perfect attendance, missing three or less or five or less days. Cashier deposit reporting accuracy, we have some schools that do a outstanding job, never hear from the bank that a deposit's off, and then you've always got your handful that there's problems all the time. Not all the time, but regularly because people just aren't as careful as they need to be. Food order submissions, we have our folks that always have their orders in on time, never an issue, and then you have the ones that you have to call every week and remind them that it was supposed to be in two hours ago. Program management, if they have improved profitability from year to year, they can earn points based on the amount their participation has gone up, and that ranges in points based on the amount of increase. There's separate points available for breakfast and lunch under that. And then, we have to do an annual review yearly that's required by the state. And if we see any issues that violates regulation for the program, we have to put it down as a corrective action, tell them how it needs to be fixed and then go back and check them again to make sure that it's been corrected. So, if they don't have any corrective actions on their list, then they could earn five points for that in that section. Taste tests would be the manager, if we have a new menu item, they could give out little samples to the kids. And if they have something that's not been real popular, but it's a great thing and the kids are just afraid to try it, a lot of times if you let them have a little taste of something, they're more likely to pick it up the next time it's on the menu. So, if they take the time to go out there and talk to the kids and offer these items, they can earn points for that. Celebrations, there are many different activities that we provide them with marketing and different prizes and some different things that they can do with the students. And I've never forced them to do it. It's always been, "Here it is, you know, we'd love for you to do this." Some of them do, some of them don't. So, that, those activities are things that they can take part in and try to get the kids excited with. For outreach, going to PTO and PTA meetings, open house, just doing some marketing for our program, they can earn different points for the number of activities they do in that field. And then, for professional development, we are required by USDA to have eight hours a year of professional development for managers, and I always provide that for them. But then there is other opportunities that they can do on their own time, belong to our professional organization, go to conferences, different things that they can earn additional credits for. So, they have the possibility of scoring, I think it's a hundred and five points total. The first incentive would be if they score ninety to a hundred and five, they could earn a thousand dollars. Second tier would be eighty to eighty-nine for eight hundred dollars. And the third tier would be seventy to seventy-nine for six hundred dollars. If they did not score at least a seventy, they wouldn't get any kind of incentive, incentive pay. Hopes that a lot of this, the maximum payout would be fifteen thousand dollars. I've got five cafeteria managers, so that would be my maximum payout per year. Hope that with these outreach activities and doing some fun kids with, things with the kids, taste tests, that would help generate more revenue to my program, which in turn would help pay for this, and then we could use some fund balance that we have. We currently have two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in fund balance to help pay for it. But I think this would help give, it's all goal-oriented and I think it would kind of give them a little push to do some fun things and get out of their comfort zone and do some more marketing for our program.
Certainly ask questions of Allison, but we wanted to bring this to you tonight to get feedback before we would bring it to a meeting for action. We just wanted to show it to you and let you see it, think about it.
And I would do this and go over this with them during their evaluation at the end of the year and go through it with them and so they'd have the whole year to work on it and then we'd go through it.
So, all of these categories, you keep track of anyway, correct?
Yes. Well, there's some that we weren't necessarily keeping track of how many discrepancies they were having or if they weren't on time all the time for some of those things. So, my people that are in charge of those things will have a sheet that they will keep track of those items so that we have that. of those items so that we have that, but most of the things, yes, we can keep track of all that.
Now, how many of these areas, how can I put this, do they need help in for the employer that's under on to help them to do it, or can these managers do all these by themselves? See, that's where, that, that would be the only problem that I would have with trying to grade in certain areas, is if you're making a manager being graded by having someone else to help them, and if they fail in that one area, then whose fault would it be for them not getting the bonus money if it was that one area that they could have pushed them over?
But as a manager, it's part of their job to make sure these things are getting done to begin with.
Okay, I, I just was wanting to make sure that that would be understood, that, okay, if you fail in this area, you can't blame nobody because you're still the manager managing the people under you, so, because that would be, I mean, if I didn't want Chuck to have the money.
Well, and, and most of, most of these things...
I'm not sabotaging.
Most of these things, they are doing on their own. The main thing would be sanitation, yes, they've got to make sure that their staff are cleaning and doing the things that they need, but as a manager, they should be doing that now.
Anyway, right.
Correct. And with the sanitation grades, if they had, if we had a school that was being, that didn't get a hundred, or a ninety-eight, or a ninety-nine because of something that was wrong with the facility that they had no control over, I would not count that.
Okay.
Something that wasn't, that was out of their control.
Yeah, because like a attendance, I mean, that's something that's their control.
That's encouraging, healthy lifestyle too, in my mind. If you're out sick, you've lost your perfect attendance. And some of it's luck, I mean, you know, some of it.
We don't really want them coming to work sick either.
No, no, and, and I think that would be something, you know...
Well, and I think it also helps...
More points not going to make you, break you. If you miss one to three, I'd rather you be home if you've got a stomach bug, like you say.
Well, and I think, I mean, I like some of these other, like your outreach, I mean, I mean, it's giving them incentive to go out and do it, which, to me, I wouldn't understand why you wouldn't do it to begin with, but this would help them get it in the back of their mind, "Okay, let's go to these PTO meetings and whatever."
Just have a presence and be there and...
Right.
I agree. Go ahead. Okay, I agree that the difference in the, the staff and the managers is not significant enough for, to take on that extra, extra responsibility. So, I think this is just a really good way to make a difference by improving or being a top performer, so I think it's a good thing.
Thank you.
You said it would come out of your fund balance?
Correct.
Okay. And then when they'd get paid, it's like the end of the school year?
They would get a separate check.
I was wondering if it's going to be Christmas or...
No, it needs to cover, they need the whole year to be able to complete all the activities, so it would be a, it would be a, a summer bonus there.
We'd have to pay that probably in June.
With their June pay.
Or even July, but it would come from Allison's funding sources.
Well, by June, you should be able to know where they're at on the list pretty much. I mean...
And that's, and that's another thing that we can be excited about, that she has a fund balance.
Oh, yes.
I can remember several years ago...
There wasn't one.
There wasn't one.
I'm going to brag on Allison too, she, some classes at Pisgah had asked me to come down and they, they wanted to talk to me, and so I went and I didn't really know what to expect, and the kids were very polite, and they were very cordial and very well-spoken, and they basically, what they were saying is they want different food, they want their food. And Allison, by the next Friday, no joke, less than a week to a week turnaround, Allison had hot wings on, on the menu and was having a taste test, and those kids, it looked like a swarm of hornets out there. They were everywhere trying those hot wings out, and you call it a mega meal, you know, it's a mega meal, and then she added pizza to the lineup, and that, you know, you can serve broccoli all day long, but, you know, you can't make them eat it.
Ain't going to eat it.
And, you know, the kids were basically saying, "We want something different."
We want meat.
She was very responsive to the needs of the, and the wants of the kids, so kudos to her for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Without objection, we may bring that August 5th, if that's okay, bring that to the board.
I think it's a good thing.
Thank you very much.
Does school board members get to try the taste tests, hot wings?
You can work and I'll teach.
Pass it, this, I promise this will just take a minute, unless you ask questions, okay? It'll take as long as you like.
I noticed how you was looking at somebody.
I was going to say, why is he looking at me? Then I, well, I did ask one.
I think he was looking at the thermostat back there.
He's just making sure it was on seventy-two. I didn't turn it down to sixty.
So, just to bring you up on a fairly big project that we identified this year that we would like to make sure is completed by the end of the coming year, and let's just start with the, with the, the regular sheet of paper, the little sheet. One of the things that dawned on us as we continued to look for ways to make sure we're doing the right thing, following rules and regulations and trying to get better, was there were just a lot of policies that said we were required to make a report to someone, and most of those reports are to the Board of Education. So, on this sheet, we already do a lot of this, bidding, selection of architects, engineers, facility design, site location, personnel, disposal of property, random student drug testing, we already do a lot of those. But what we will plan to do, my collaborative leadership team, we will sit down and talk about how we do this already, or if we don't do it, how do we think we should do it? Should that go, be a report to buildings and grounds? Should it be a report to finance? Should it be a, a report to everyone in a work session? Should it be a report during a school meeting, a school board meeting? There are a couple of these that are to the State Board of Education or to the State Superintendent. The thing that I would like you all to think about, and we'll bring this back in a, in a month or two, to get your feedback and make sure you get the report the way that you want it, okay? In, in the meeting that you want, or to the, to the whole board or part of the board. If there are any on here that you just don't want, we'll, we'll take it out of the policy if the law permits. Otherwise, I want to, I want to make sure that we get you the report that you want. So, you don't need to decide that tonight, we'll come back to you and suggest to you that this is how we do this one going forward, and you know, sometimes I make reports just by picking up the phone and calling all of you, or leaving you a voice message, so that might be an option. So, that's that sheet, reports that the superintendent or the school system is to make to the board, and again, there are a few there to the state. Any, any questions about that? We'll come back with some ideas, and what I'd like for you all to do is if there are any that you just don't want, we'll look at the policy and says, and see if we can avoid that, we may not be able to avoid it, it may be required by law, then we'll do that. Okay? All right? Any questions about that? The other mega sheet, front, back, many pages, sorry about that, with our board policies, Trevor and I have talked about those more than maybe I talked with Mark in the past about those, and one of the things that we discovered was that, I think sixty-four of these, believe it or not, said, "The superintendent will develop regulations for..." Okay? Now, the good news is when we purchase the school board policies from the state that we can tweak, they also provided us with template regulations. And so, just know that, and, and these are sort of like, it's like the superintendent's rule that helps you figure out how to conduct the policy, and you can change them just like that, doesn't have to go through school board policy. But just know, this year, we will be working on reading, talking to committees, talking to departments, and put, making sure that we have all of those regulations in place. A lot of them are already in place, like how you do student assignment, a lot of these are in place, we have regulations for these. But just wanted to let you know that there are, I counted them, I may have miscounted, there may be sixty-two or sixty-five, but about sixty-four sets of regulations, and we may have, what, twenty already, you think? We may already have twenty of them done, just because, you know, we did that work as the policies came in. And then the little, little X under principal and superintendent just says, it just lets us know that in that policy, the principal is supposed to do something, and so is the superintendent. It's usually not real significant. For example, under professional development, it says, "The superintendent will make sure that we have professional development." And under principal, it says, "The principal will talk to the staff about the professional development that they need." So, that won't require a lot of work, other than making sure we do it every year. Any questions about that?
About the ones that don't have no X's?
Well, that means it's a policy that sort of stands alone by itself, it doesn't require a regulation, or it, or it doesn't say anything about...
Another policy might take it, I mean, may, or hand to hand with another policy that's doing the same thing, maybe.
Yeah, and, and some of the policies are linked together.
Right.
Like, you see the blank down there, seventeen, ten, twenty, forty, twenty-one, and seventy-two, put my glasses on, thirty, those are three that go together. And in that one, there's some things that the principal and superintendent should do.
Right.
But I just want to let you know, we'll try to have those really neat and clean this coming school year, make sure they're all what they should be. Any questions about those?
Just one comment, overwhelming. It's a lot of information in there.
Well, I tell principals, I tell principals a lot in meetings, pay attention, this is not exciting, but it's very important, and that's the way I feel about the, this policy and regulatory stuff. This is not exciting, but we want it to be pretty good, because it's important, we may have to rely on it, so we'll give it a lot of good attention this year and, and do as much of, of it as we can early.
It's like your emergency action plan, you want a good one just in case you need it one day.
That's right.
You don't ever want to use it.
That's right.
If it's there, then you want to be able to follow it.
That's all we have, Mr. Francis, if there's things for the rest of the...
Ms. Rogers asked to make some comments, I think, or a question.
Yeah, I talked with Jim Francis earlier, and there's a couple of things that I want to bring to y'all's attention, and it, it may be something that, that we want to take a look at. We, you prefaced just a minute ago about spending new money, but there may be some places that we need to take a look. One, coaching supplements. It's my understanding that we've not looked, moved, or done anything with coaching supplements in fifteen years. That schedule has remained...
It's been a while, I think, I think that was when Steve Williams was the AD, it's been a while, or Danny.
And, and also, and what we're, what we're talking about is, we just want to make it sure that it's fair and equitable, as fair and equitable as possible for the work and services provided. The, the other thing, and this is something you've got to research and look at, I know, but we would like to suggest that we, we take a look at it. The other thing is assistant coaches, making sure that we have the appropriate number of assistant coaches per sport that's needed, and understand what that trigger mechanism is that decides, oh, they've reached a level, they need another assistant on the softball team, or on the basketball team, or on the volleyball team. Just understanding that a little bit better so that when we get asked questions, we'll be able to, to respond and know that we're doing it the right way.
Yes, sir, I'll pull that down and we'll take a look at it, probably form a little group to look at that, make sure there are more eyes and more heads on it than me. Have to think about how that group's comprised, but we'll take a look at it, develop something and bring you something back to, to look at and consider.
I guess my question would be on that, I think, obviously, if it hadn't been looked at in fifteen years, it's out of date probably, and probably not up to date, but I don't know what it, what would it look like, I guess my question would be when it gets here, is how does it compare to surrounding counties? What, how does it look, you know, compared to, say, Buncombe? Well, maybe the whole western end of the state, or statewide, I don't know what that looks like.
I think you look at surrounding counties and school, elees of comparable size.
Yeah, so I think, I just think it needs to be some kind of groundwork so that when we do something, which I, obviously, I think we need to do something.
We need to make sure that Tusco, since their three A's getting compensated, like three A's don't.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just think there needs to be some kind of rhyme and reason.
They should be getting paid more than the Pisgah coaches, which are two. I'm just joking. I'm only joking. So, y'all ready to join this fight?
Well, no, I just, no, I agree, I mean, I think people need to be paid, they just need to be paid fairly.
Right.
And for what, for the work they're doing, and fairly, they need to be in the ballgame to where they, somebody else down the street can't steal them over a few hundred dollars or whatever.
I, I, I don't know that we're where we are athletically, I think when we come back to you and show you what you all have done as a board, and again, starting with the teacher supplement increase that Dr. Garrett did, through the things that we have done to date, I think you'll be very pleased, I think we can show you some things, not only from our school district and other school districts, and I, I just, I, I think, I just think you'll be pleased with that. I do think we're near the end of a lot of new money, and that was my recommendations to the board, you all spend what you want, just know that I don't want to be responsible for all of what you spend.
Well, and that's...
It's a joke too.
And that's the thing, I mean, we've come, we've made some good progress, are we where we need to be? No, but, but we, we're making progress and, and helping our people, I think that's most important. And on the other hand, like you said, we got, I mean, we know where we're at spending-wise, so we've kind of got to keep that in mind too, so.
Very good. Anything else? And we stand adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.